Call the roll please.
Excuse me.
I can do it.
Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Hey, Callian.
Yeah.
Matt Nixon.
Oh, excuse us.
Uh, Ryan Holmes.
Yes.
Are we brilliant?
Yeah.
And Roland Tufts.
Yeah, thanks.
Town manager of the board.
A couple of events that are worth noting on Saturday, January twenty fifth at one P M. At the Mount Everest High School Forum. There is a community center needs assessment workshop. Please see the front page of our website for more details. The snow date is going to be on Sunday, the twenty sixth. And on February fourth, it's six thirty P M. Here at Town Hall is the final workshop to weigh in on the proposed climate action plan. Reminder that the deadline is January thirty first for registering your dog. And if you don't register by that day, there's a late fee of twenty five dollars. Uh, once registered, you'll get instructions on how to submit your dog's photo for his or her moment of his or her moment of fame. They will have fur, but on our town sign. This morning, the town manager, assistant town manager found someone else taking pictures of our sign. It's been a big hit of people being able to get their dogs picture taken. It's just been kind of neat. And if you're looking for something else fun to do at Town Hall, our history committee has put together a new um exhibit of the Thompson Fire Department memorabilia out in our rotunda. So thank you for the history committee putting that forward. It's really interesting. And now I'd like to class up my report by having Chief Hagan come up to recognize one of our police officers, Officer Jose Gomez.
Good evening. Uh, if I could take just a couple of minutes of your time, I'd like to recognize Officer Jose Gomez here for a lifesaving event that he was involved in on uh on New Year's Eve, so just a couple of weeks ago. Um, on the thirty first of December, we had a call eight fifteen in the morning about a subject that was standing on the side of the marinating bridge, looking down into the uh down into the water and the caller was concerned. So Jose was dispatched out to it. And he got there a few minutes later. When he pulled up, there was actually a large eighteen wheeler box truck pulled over on the side of the bridge. And when Jose approached the gentleman, he actually was standing out on the sidewalk, looking out over the railing. Um, Jose went up, started talking to him, realized that the gentleman was in crisis. Uh, gentleman started telling Jose about how his uh his girlfriend had left him a week prior. He just didn't care about life anymore. And Jose did a great job. He's trying to get a dialogue started with the gentleman. Gentleman didn't want to talk to him. And uh, you know, Jose asked him about it. Maybe he could go to the hospital and talk to somebody. The gentleman wasn't having any of it. And at one point started to leave. Jose was able to get him to keep talking to him. And again, asked him if he wanted to go to the hospital. He didn't want, didn't want to go. And uh the next thing you know, the gentleman just got very escalated. And he walked away from Jose Gomez, immediately grabbed the top railing of the uh railing up just above the sidewalk and started to climb up it and throw himself over. And just when he was uh swinging his his leg over the railing, Jose was able to run up, grab a hold of the gentleman and physically pull him down, back down to the railing. And eventually was able to hold on to him and get him down to the ground. Um. I gotta be honest, this was no easy task. I've seen the video from both Jose's body camera as well as the cruiser camera. The gentleman was roughly seven inches taller than Jose and had him by a good fifty pounds. So for Jose to be able to get him down to the ground while also calling for help was was a pretty daunting task. Um. After Jose got him to the ground, he called for backup. And uh just remained very calm while he was talking to the gentleman, telling him that, you know, his family loved him and that we could get him help. And the gentleman just, you know, wasn't listening to any of it, but I I wish you could all see the video. We can't show it on our Facebook just for concerns over the gentleman's privacy and so forth. But uh Jose was just so calm, kept talking to the man. Uh, you know, everything that we teach in de-escalation, Jose was doing for him, almost to a fault, to be honest with you, because, excuse me, when Jose called and said he needed help because the gentleman had tried to jump. Jose was so calm that nobody really understood what was going on until you see the video. So it took us a little longer than it probably should have to get out there and help him. Uh, but Jose was able to keep the gentleman down on the ground. You know, he didn't put all his weight on the gentleman to try to hold him down. Instinct where the gentleman would have tried to get up while that was going on. So Jose was just beside him, kept his hand on the gentleman's back, kept reassuring him until backup arrived. Um. It was, it's really amazing to see, and we're all very proud of Jose. So um you know, sometimes first responders wonder if we're making a difference out here. And there's absolutely no doubt to this gentleman, he's forty seven, he's from out of state, just happened to be driving over the bridge when he suddenly decided to end his life. Uh, so no doubt on his family's part that, you know, Jose does make a difference out here. Uh, you should know that we have put Jose in for the lifesaving award through the main chiefs of police. And also State Representative Macias has reached out to us. And he wants to recognize Jose at a ceremony up at Augusta. So we just want to take a minute to tell you what Jose had done and uh.
Thank you.
Thank you after did it.
Uh, thank you for making a difference. Next item on. Consider calendar. Approval of the minutes of the regular select board meeting, December nineteen, two thousand twenty four.
Salute.
Who's the secretary? Okay, I'll figure it. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Victor. It's like there's white eye on there or something. All right. Go back in time. Boarding committee reports and updates. An update from the conservation committee, Victor Angelo, Chair. Leaving. Thought you were getting off easy, didn't you?
I could just go home. Hi, I'm um Victor Angelo, Chair of the Conservation Commission. And uh, I, as I understand, I um presented to you with our plan for coming here. Um, and so we we really have a um small agenda this year. There's only three items on it, but um three major items, but there's one of them is a very large town. Um, so to start with, we are looking at um starting work on an update to our national areas plan. Um, we've been trying to, it was going for a few years, but um we think we have a process now. Um, we can at least get started. Um. We actually are working with um uh Professor Ivan Johnson from Ivan from um Boden College, uh who's running a G I S class. And one of the parts of the plan update is to uh make sure that we're looking at the right data. Um. Some of the stuff hasn't changed, but there's a lot of new data that's available um that we didn't have before. Um. One of them is the work we've just done for the climate action plan. Um, we know a lot more about where other other issues, vulnerable issues, uh, sorry, vulnerable areas, um, might be. Um. And we should definitely try to avoid developing areas where we're going to have flooded houses and basements. So we don't need any more of that. So um. And there's, there's other wildlife habitat information that um has the states constantly updating that. And there are actually other organizations in the Nature Conservancy have all new uh rare plant habitat uh data. And there's a whole bunch of rare habitat around Maritim Bay, uh which we'd like to incorporate into the plan. Um, so anyway, hopefully with uh with uh Professor Johnson's class, we can actually um you know, incorporate that into the maps that we have from the G I S information we have from the fire plan. Um. That's step one. Um, the other parts of the plan uh that we need to update are essentially um community priorities. Um, and then um figuring out how to actually make how to act, action items that would actually help us conserve land. Um, the only action items so far that, I mean, uh, from our old plan that's really been working is cooperation with B T L T. Um, and you know, to to buy either in D or in um or cost or easement uh land. Um, and that's been somewhat successful. Um. But um, there's just not enough money to conserve the land, you know, all the land that probably should be. So um, we need a little help um from our own rural zoning. Um, and and so um that's, I think this year we're probably just going to get the G I S data, the maybe um hopefully be able to hire a consultant to do some of the more advanced work. Um. We'd like um a build out analysis, um, which basically shows us what would happen to their current, you know, zoning laws and stuff like that, and what what it would look like, the town would look like in ten, fifteen, twenty years. And uh, see whether we're happy with that or not. Um, and what we could possibly lose or or gain. Um. And um, so anyway, um, the next, the the other thing that uh we've been sort of tangentially involved in is the pollinator garden at the um transfer station, um solid waste facility. Um, and uh, um. One of the things we're we're going to try to do is get a presentation on um the importance of pollinators and the garden in particular um at the public library um this spring. Uh, the person who, our intern from last year is he is, will be available to host that presentation or be part of that presentation. Um, so um. And then uh hopefully raise awareness of why we're doing this. We have some, apparently we have some signs already printed that we can post out there. Um, and then um and and actually the seeds have been planted. Um, so hopefully next year, next spring, we'll start to see some some flowers. Um, it may take a few years before it really matures out. Um, we may have to do another seedling or two. Um, because it takes a while. But some of the um species that we're planting might take three or more years to germinate. They don't necessarily just all come out like seeds that be planted in a garden structure. So, anyway, um. And then the last thing uh we're going to focus on is we we did a monitoring, we we went along with B T L T on monitoring um visit to our head of Todd Park. He's not the, he's not the day hold on that. And um we discovered, a few years ago, we did a base, a cutting of a whole bunch of invasive species there. Um, and we noticed that it was starting, they were starting to come back. Um, and we think that we did out there this year and cut them back again. That'll help us um remediate the issue a little bit. Um. The uh, the biggest point is barberry. Um, and um, barberry is a real good um habitat for ticks. And so um, and we'd like to put in a trail there. We started a little bit of work on that, but um uh, it would not be particularly conducive to have a barberry all around the the trail area, which uh um is exactly where it is now. So, um. And um, and then, of course, our normal work um will be, uh, we, we don't have any, um, we've done a fair amount of even monitoring the last few years, so we don't, we don't have any properties that really need to be visited this year, but um if something comes up, we might do that. Um. We're going to take the reports that E T L T develops from monitoring that we were uh attendance uh at uh last year and sort of see what we can learn about our own internal processes. So wow. Um, and then um. Oh, um, also the other, the other things that we we do on a regular basis is when um subdivision or other developments come up that um that require a review for the open space requirements. Uh, there's a part of our subdivision code has a requirement for um open space or additional recreational needs of new developments. And uh um, we basically, if if there's um, the the developers may propose um that they set aside certain lands for public use in their development. Um. And we usually review that aside whether it's something that the town should be interested in. Uh, if it's not, the recreation department could weigh in on it and say, oh, this is something we might want to use. Generally, that's next to the no to that. There's another two acre parcel somewhere off in the woods. It's not something that everyone, you know, the town is totally wants to maintain. Um, but um, and that, I just got a a plan that was submitted just recently that we're going to have preview at the next meeting. So so uh, that's kind of an ongoing thing. Um, and then um any, anytime there's a new property acquired by the town, um, probably for a taxing or something, um, we'll usually review that to see whether there's any conservation done. Um, that's, we have a a rating system and we develop a chart. This is, you know, median by values that we particularly um, and um, sorry, um. Our, so our focus is really going to be on the, you know, the natural areas plan update this year. Um. And we're hoping that um the town will back us in allowing us to hire consultants to sort of do some of the work. We we would like to do public outreach, but rather than doing it in person, which is difficult sometimes, um. We'd like to do more electronic. Um, so story maps, you know, any kind of presentation materials we can have that we can on our website and have people, direct people to and answer a survey or, you know, comment about uh whether they think this is a good idea or not. Um, so uh, we'll, we'll need help with that. Um, that's not something that any of us are particularly expert at. So, um, and there are people that are. All right, um, open to questions, bro.
They have nothing to do, basically, is what you're saying. That's very aggressive, I think, you know, but clearly it's a lot of value in every one of those things you talked about, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, the the last plan took four years. We're hoping that this one's like maybe one and a half years or something, because it's really just an update. But uh the the hard part's going to be, you know, how do we protect these properties? And what's that? You know, what does that mean when it comes to changes to our zoning code and stuff like that? And um we need some, you know, maybe we need to explain why, why it's important. So the town people understand it. And then can go forward, you know, we can go forward without um getting adopted or town meeting at some point. So yeah, there's going to be a lot of education, specifically. Um, and I and also some input as to what what seems feasible here. I mean, there are lots of ideas of how to do that, but I mean, it's going to work here. So that's going to be the hard part. And I think that's going to happen later, but we got to do all the preparation for it.
Do you see the threats increasing?
Yes, development pressure is pretty high. In fact, um, there was a property, I don't know, it's suppose this is public at this point, but um, there's a property off of um what's it called? Uh, West Bridge, uh, Bay Bridge Road, yeah, um, a hundred and eight acres. Um, that was up for sale last, this time last year. And um, we and B T L T kind of noticed at the same time and we huddled and said, you know, what can we do about this? And um, it turns out that um, they were able to line up funding from Lance Romans Future. It's rated the is is at the head of um the muddy river, headquarters of the muddy river. It is incredibly valuable habitat. So um fortunately, with state funding and other funding sources, B T L T was able to put together um some, you know, the the funding needed to purchase some of the property. But that would have been another twenty or thirty homes off of a road that we don't do a whole lot of maintenance on. Now we're going to, we're going to have to do a whole lot more maintenance on. Um, the costs could be pretty expensive. It could be pretty expensive.
Actually, we don't even own it. And a lot of, a lot of it's abandoned. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah. And so that's one of the reasons, I mean, unlikely if they put in uh expensive homes out there, people are going to want the the road paved and filed. And that's going to, that would add to our costs of national, probably more than we can at that. So, um, and um but fortunately that worked out, but not all properties fit that criteria. We got lucky there. Um, and we do have some money now with with this open space requirement for subdivisions, developers can pay in lieu. Um, and so instead of setting aside land for additional recreational open spaces, they don't pay. Um, and the lease structure um changed so last year so that we could make it easier for sort of in town, you know, single um bedroom apartments and stuff like that. That don't have to, you know, but I need it lower for them. But then the consequence is also it's a little bit higher now for sort of large subdivisions. We have four bedroom or five bedroom homes. Um, so um, it's it 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 amounts to a small, nice chunk of money at the moment. Um. But um, it it's not, it's not enough to buy one property. So we have to partner with, you know, somebody else in order to get the money. But or get enough money to buy a property. Uh, this one at Muddy River was um, um almost five hundred thousand dollars. Um, so um, and you know, there's no way that people do that. Anyway, so, yeah.
Seems relatively inexpensive in the big picture, doesn't it? A lot of it's wetlands.
Yeah.
It's sort of like the appeal of someone wanting to go there and uh, it's recreative, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was.
Without the tax.
It was maybe uh fifteen or twenty acres of actually developable land. The rest of it was all, you know, basically marsh. Um. Which, which is why it's so valuable for them, you know, for the Lance Romans Futures Program that they're they're used perfectly and and for B T L T as well. So, um. But yeah, that that again, it's not going to happen in other cases. Um, and then one of the things of in the new plan I'd like to look into, which is in it's mentioned in the old plan, but it's not, we didn't really develop it, is connectivity. I mean, you know, it's great to have parcels here and there, but wildlife don't understand the boundaries. Or they also need to migrate in order to get food and as weather changes and stuff like that. And so we need to sort of think about how that connectivity occurs to the channel before we, you know, start blocking it all off. And um. Sorry, I haven't caught her. Anyways.
Can I, uh, I'm gonna ask a stupid question. This is a commission on a committee, right? So there's no charge or deadline, or is there?
They're a permanent um under orders, actually state law.
Yeah.
Committee. And they do have a um requirement to come back once a year to give you an annual action plan, which is what Victor was just doing. So.
So there's no approval or anything that we need for tonight, dude?
I mean, I guess if you didn't like the plan, you could give feedback or something, but um.
Or just be something else we should be doing. We have, um, there is um town code as well as the state code as to what our charge is, you know, already. Um, so, um, I, it's quite long, so I won't go into the details. But basically, our our conservation commissions in the state are generally involved in managing open space in the town in somewhere or other. We have a recreation department, so we don't do things on the rec fields and stuff like that. But there's still other lots of old town open space that we that we kind of manage. Uh. Most of it is low maintenance, um, which is fine, but and we own, we now, the town now owns three easements, um from various different developments. Um, and so we we monitor them regularly, um just to make sure that people aren't building a flat trash or, you know, cutting trails that don't belong there or whatever.
Um. Going back to what you said about um paying uh instead of doing open space, I thought we changed that. I I remember Dave talking about it and saying that you shouldn't have that option. They should have to put the open space.
Victor, can you talk, you're right, there was change last, last year, you want to be last year's changes. There weren't changes exactly the way Marie just said, but we did have that last year's town meeting.
Yeah, the change last year was a very minor one, actually. But um, it was the that ordinance um was before my time. Um, it was changed back in the early two thousands. It was that the developers had to put aside space, but the problem was we were ending up with these one and a half or two acre parcels all over the place that basically nobody could manage. Um, there's no way that our small committee can actually go monitor all that stuff. And also bring you know, uh enforcement action against the landowners, uh to make sure that they're using it as open space and not putting their garage, you know, their uh whatever tool sheds on it and stuff like that, um, and claiming it as their own. Um, so there are a few of those still left, but um, basically they pretty much you know, they've been just, they've been incorporated into the subdivision. So they're no longer really open space. And so that that, it hasn't really worked. It doesn't really serve a purpose of conservation because A, they're pretty small. Um, and it's, it's not like enough habitat for any, you know, reasonable um a wildlife, you know, to survive. Um, and it's, it's basically just, it it, what we're looking for now is actually, you know, um between our open space subdivision um ordinance allows in a rural area allows a a subdivision to have a large open space and a cluster of houses. Um, that kind of, that's that and having that also connected to other open space means that we have larger unfragmented habitat blocks, which are really important for for habitat.
So these open spaces, they're put on the town to maintain and not the developer?
No, they're owned by the, usually they're owned by the um association, uh county homeowners association for that development. But, you know, the people change, the homeowner association no longer exists. There's probably nobody maintaining it at all. And so somebody, you know, says, oh, well, this property next to mine is, you know, part of my property. So I, you know, I do what I want with it. And so it's, you know, it it it's not really managed. And and we, and in some cases, we don't have good records of what those parcels were. I've looked at, tried to look for a couple of them that I've been told were 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 done that way. And there really isn't good information about it. So um, you know, the deeds weren't recorded correctly or whatever happened. Um, they show up on a subdivision plan, but that's not good enough. There's got to be, you know, a deed record. So so that's, we're trying to, we try to get away from that. Um, and so that was, that that created this current open space law. Um, last year, um, we tried to make it easier, um, with that change, uh, for sort of uh smaller properties with, you know, one bedroom apartments could could um not have to pay so much, basically, um for the open space. Um, they do have increased recreational needs, but but, you know, we probably shouldn't be hitting them as hard as somebody who's building a four bedroom house because they kind of have a lot more kids, a lot more people than a one bedroom or a studio apartment. So um, we tried to make it more proportional. If it wasn't, it was basically just based on the number of properties, number of units in the subdivision. So, but we added, um, we allowed one, um, an exception to this rule for mobile home park. And we did it with a deed restriction. Um. Unfortunately, deed restrictions aren't enforceable, really. Um, the the owner of the land would have to enforce the deed restriction. And if they're a developer and they no longer live in the state and you know, it's going to be a hassle. And generally, they don't care. So they probably wouldn't even bother. And so it's it's meaningless, it can be meaningless. And so we wanted to say that there is a case where that is useful. And that is in the case of that uh mobile home park where the state is actually, it's it's a slogan, slogan.
Slogan.
Slogan. Um, and basically the state would be the enforcer. Because they have said, okay, to meet our environmental constraints, you you have to leave this space open. And you can't, you know, you can't change on it. And if that happens, then the state would come down and say, hey, look, you know, you're violating your 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 deed or your, you know, the the law, and you have to, you have to comply. So I felt comfortable in that case, or the committee felt comfortable saying, yes, I actually, I didn't initially, but they convinced me that um we should allow that in this case because there was, there was enforcement in that case. But that isn't, that isn't true in most cases. So I I, and we, the wording was a little too broad in the language that got adopted. And I didn't catch it until a public hearing, and then it was too late to change it. This was for the town meeting. And so we redid it, you know, we modified it the next town meeting just to make sure that it didn't, you know, say that like. So we redid it, you know, we modified it the next town meeting just to make sure that it didn't, you know, stay that way. Sorry. Is that answered? That's a really long answer, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you. Great update. Got ready to reschedule agenda? Item twenty-five oh one? Oh, what? I just, I missed something else. Oh, correspondence. I'm a columnist. Well, you have, oh, sorry, Jeanette.
Oh, hit comment.
Yes, by all means, please comment.
Comments and connects on your agenda. I'm Jeanette McNeil, I live at Chuburkside. And I am a member of the Bike Ped Committee, but I'm not its chair and I'm definitely not authorized to speak for it, and so I am speaking for myself. And I wanted to thank the Select Board for your letter supporting our recent Complete Streets grant. If, we were so pleased to get that. We were, as a committee, not experienced enough to realize. That the Select Board had to approve the letter before it went out, and so we asked a little bit late. And the letter came in late, as did a letter from our state rep, despite his heroic efforts to get it in sooner. But, and Jeff Emerson had properly set the grant in a few hours before the deadline, which he don't know half to do. So we had these two letters that hadn't been attached and Sky Saladi had the thought. Of just sending them in later, letting them know they were coming and sending them in later and asking them very nicely if they would please attach them to the grant. Which I am so happy to tell you that they did. So your letter was appreciated in the first place. And in the second place, despite very small missteps on the part of the committee, actually, it went. And so we just wanted to, I just wanted to thank you for that. So that's my whole comment.
Quite a word. Other correspondents?
Yes, we had a, a letter that all of us received this morning from Darren and Ellen Stairs. And they were complaining that there was solicitation, even though they have a sign posted. That said, no solicitation permitted. They came anyway, came after dark. And they said, we get this a lot from people trying to sell them solar panels or sell them internet service, and so. Chief Hagan, if you could address what people should do in this case, that would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Evening, again, our Hagan Chief of Police. So if somebody has a person come onto their property and they do not wish for them to be on the property, they should just give us a call. And we could trespass them and, and hopefully they wouldn't have to deal with that. We have a lot, we've had our share of experience with this in the last couple of years. There's been a lot of door-to-door salespeople going around. We've had a lot of complaints from people that have no trespassing signs and. To be honest, I called a couple of companies and they teach their people to ignore those signs due to some Supreme Court rulings. That say they still have to be warned to get off the property before they actually have to leave or they would be trespassing. So that was the answer that I got from the salesman that it actually comes to my property. And I have no trespassing signs up, so I called their supervisor and they said that that's what they train their people to do. So we had a discussion of both. Legality versus what might be wise for their employees, especially because we've had some complaints of them going house to house after dark. But at the end of the day, simple answer is people should give us a call if they have somebody on their property for whatever reason that they don't want there. We can go give them a legal trespass warning, and then if they refuse to leave, then it'd be a criminal trespass issue.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. I have a question for you, though. This letter was addressed to the board specifically and not to us, the town manager. Can I forward that to you and we can send a reply to them on behalf?
All right. Twenty-five zero one, zero one, it's the first one, wow. And a boy one, too. Exactly. Is consideration any appropriate action to instruct the tax office whether or not to proceed with the implementation of customer-facing technology? Increase, increase a fee?
So basically, what we wanted to do in the tax office was to have. Forward-facing credit card readers, right now all they have is the swipes that are behind the glass. And this would be in front of the person, they, they swipe their own card or. They can do a pay, you know, the chipless, all that good stuff.
Yeah.
And surprisingly, it, it's just not a big thing in municipalities. We tried to partner with Andrew Skargan and they were trying to develop their own in-house one and, and. It went on and on and they finally gave up, or we gave up because they just weren't attentive. It wasn't getting done, things weren't fixed, it didn't work properly. So we had our. Our representative from the bank comes in once a year and we go over every, all of our banking issues. And so I asked her and she said that they do partner with Clover, which is a company. I, you probably, if you've ever done takeout, you've probably seen Clover somewhere.
Yeah, they're huge.
So their solution, they partner with the bank. And we would like to get that. Basically, what they're, what they're asking for is. They do two, they have two different kinds of devices and we can. Figure out which, which ones we want, but, but there are fees involved in it. They would charge the customer. Would be a flat three percent. And, or, and right now we're two seventy-five, right now we're two seventy-five percent. And then they would, also, we'd have to buy the devices, we'd have a monthly fee for, say, it would be. Depending on, and we're still kind of on the fence about how many we would get, whether we would get all four, because we hardly ever have four people up at the window, maybe one or two days. A year or maybe, maybe a week, a month, yeah. So we might, so we haven't really decided which one we wanted, but we weren't really sure that the three percent for the taxpayer would. Fly with the board. I know it's been a, an issue of the past. And they also do have, they have a monthly fee per device and then they have a flat ten dollar fee per month. So we wanted to make sure you guys were on board.
What's the fee per, per device?
Uh, per device is eleven ninety-five per month. So we weren't really sure whether we'd get two or whether we'd get four. We have four spaces at our window. We weren't, and they're totally wireless, so you can just. Pass them over and still use them. Uh, so that wouldn't really be an issue. And, yeah, so that's what we wanted to do was, was to see if we, we had you on board with that and you don't, then we'll just continue on the way we are. But the concern was, this goes back to when COVID started, it was like, do you really wanna take somebody's credit card in your hand?
Right.
And, you know, if, if somebody has to put their own credit card in and do their own credit card, chances of them leaving it there are much smaller. Or, or you forgetting to give it back to them is much smaller. And then you also have the, the chips on the cards. That are quote-unquote more secure than, than just using this one.
I have two questions. One is, residents can still pay for things with a check?
Absolutely.
And so there's no fee if they use a check, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then my second question is if we go to the system and they're gonna be charged three percent, will there be some kind of sobbing on the counter of it? Credit card?
There is that.
Well, yeah, we would definitely have to. Yeah, it's closer.
To say that they're being charged, if you use a credit card, you're being charged three percent.
Right, and we tell them, when, when they come up to the window and they use a credit card, we tell them that they're gonna, how much they're gonna get charged.
Oh, okay, so as long as they're aware of it.
And online payments would change in certain instances.
Right, that's still gonna remain with Andrew Skargan, and they do charge a dollar for a check. Because you can do, you know, electronic check.
Right.
You do electronic check for one dollar on, if you go to our website, well, the, the bank's website to do that. As far as the fee, it says here, three percent plus ten cents.
Higher, that was, that was an earlier edition from the bank, earlier proposal they sent us, that is the one that we got.
It's not in the proposal, the final proposal that we got. Okay, we wrote this before we got the final. So if, if you have any questions about it?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I agree with you guys. I, I like the idea that there's some kind of customer-facing simplicity. It's the way we live our lives now.
It is.
The one big, I don't wanna call it an issue because it's not an issue, but the reserve I have in my mind is. As a small business owner, Clover's, you know, meant for a lot of small businesses, and municipality is not really a small business. And I'm wondering if we've looked at other processors other than just a bank, per se, but to charge three percent. On a card and then also charge you guys a monthly fee to have the hardware seems a little bit outrageous for a credit card company who. Ultimately is gonna take, you know, how much do we take in on excise tax of vehicles every year?
A million.
And three percent of that?
Well, I, I would say.
Not all of them pay by credit card, but let's say now that it's convenient, people want to, we're just giving that money to them. Plus, plus.
Well, no, that's on top, we're not, we're not taking a cut from any.
No, that goes to the credit card company from the consumer.
From the consumer, right.
Right, so their excise tax, let's say they're, they bought a brand-new vehicle and it's a thousand-dollar registration. They're gonna pay thirty dollars to the credit card company just to use the card on that.
Right.
And the credit card company's also charging you to have that piece of equipment so that person can pay them more money.
Right.
I, I just, personal experience, speaking, I had to go through the same thing in a small business looking around, and that's just not feasible. I, it's a personal regret of mine because I feel it's just robbery. But there are companies out there that do not charge for their equipment, and I do think you can get a lower rate than three percent. Say it, but PayPal offers two point six percent. So, uh, there's a lot of places that will. I don't think Clover is the right choice for Topsum, but I do think we should look at. Furthering the scope of customer-facing simplicity.
Okay. Doesn't PayPal charge the vendor and not the client?
Yes, which is.
So that would be increased charge for us.
Right.
Well, that's, that's the part, is there's state law that says we're not supposed to.
You can't, right.
Right.
But I do think there's other people that don't charge that.
Okay.
Uh, they can charge, you can charge it to the consumer, but not have a fee for the equipment.
Okay.
Because, I mean, that's, it's a lot of money they're gonna take in. I'm pretty sure that that can be a good negotiating tactic with any company saying, hey, look. You know, you're turning down X amount of dollars because you wanna charge us ten dollars a month. Just get rid of that, you know?
Well, I could just ask them, they'd get rid of it, sure.
And lower their fee to match what we currently have.
Okay, all right.
Does Andrew Skargan pay us an earnings credit fee?
Do they, what?
Well, a lot of cash management solutions the banks offer, they allow to basically, allow you to basically use your balance in the bank. They'll give you an earnings credit fee, which basically allows you to pay your fees through that earnings credit.
We don't, oh, well, I'm assuming our banking is part of our RP that we did. We don't, we don't get charged for, we, we don't pay any fees.
Okay, so they, they are probably just using our balance and they're proset that, that sounds like.
Well, we're trying to keep those in CDs so that they.
Yeah, but even, even so, it's, it's a balance the bank gets to keep, so it's. It's, that's pretty common practice, so I haven't seen the RP, but I suspect that's probably what they're doing, because. Have we been, since Bob, before I've been here, we were with Andrew Skargan. But I, I agree with Ryan. I think you can ask him to sharpen, sharpen their pencil a little bit, because.
We'll go back to them. Sharpen.
Yeah, I worked in that business a long time. I can tell you, there's, it's all over the place.
Well, it is, it's, it's funny, I, I mean, when you try to find a vendor that works with governments, I mean, the, the pool is small.
Tell them how much money they'll make. They'll open their doors.
And, and the company, that Clover, they're owned by a Fortune 500 company. They, these guys are not small. They, they're gigantic, so.
And I think my, my point was more that they advertise to the small business owner, but they are large scale, very large scale.
Yeah, so, but I think it's a great idea, because obviously sometimes people have cash flow issues and. Gives them an opportunity to basically pay us on time.
Exactly. Do we have a, a, a times of the S type situation with this? Like, is there a contract running out of how we're normally doing it?
No, no. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right. Item twenty-five zero two, consideration any appropriate action to allow the police chief to designate any officer under his command. To represent the town in district court for violations of town ordinances.
Good evening again. So District Attorney's Office doesn't really have the time or wish to prosecute our town ordinance violations. Such as a dog at large or parking zones. So what we have to do is we have to have somebody from the town do that. We sent Detective Zeverstone and Burns to municipal ordinance prosecutor training course. And part of the statute requirement is that we have the Select Board sign off saying you're all fine with us prosecuting our own certices. So I think I've already sent the town manager to the film arm. We're just asking if you would all be agreeable to sign it.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I, I think it's a good idea.
We need a motion, though.
Sure. I make a motion to allow the police chief to designate any officer under his command to represent the town in district court for violations of town ordinance.
Will there be fees involved, the charge to the. File leader?
Yes, if somebody pleads guilty to, let's say, dog at large or parking fee, that comes to the town.
Oh, okay, that's good, yeah.
Okay, good, second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann, seconded by Ryan. All favor of motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're definitely not, yes. This is, this is Ryan. All right, uh, we'll sign that. Okay, at this point, we're going to do an executive session. Item twenty-five zero three, enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Section four oh five six D to discuss waiver contract negotiations. A motion.
I make a motion that we step out of this meeting and enter into executive session.
Okay. We'll just second it all in favor. All right, we're in executive session.